Hello, I everyone. My name is Ernest Cavalo. I'm Chair for Neighborhood Board 13. It is now six oh two. We'll go ahead and start this meeting. And this time I'm gonna let the board members introduce themselves, starting with Lori.
Good evening. My name is Lori McCarny, and thank you for coming tonight to our meeting.
Hi, everyone. Ross Isokane, welcome.
And online?
Hi, good evening. This is Kevin Lai. Go ahead, Bob.
Mute, please.
So we had a fifty-fifty shot there, and I'm Robert Armstrong. Aloha, everyone.
You're muted.
Hi, everyone. This is Kevin, and calling you from Malaysia, but glad to participate tonight. Thank you, everyone, for joining.
Alright, so we have our online Robert Armstrong. We'll work out his technical difficulties in a second.
Do you hear me now?
Yes, we can. Go ahead, Bob.
Okay. Just aloha to everyone. Thank you.
And do we have Mr. Lai up here?
Thank you, Chair. This is Kevin, calling, thanking everyone for joining us tonight, and looking forward to a good meeting. Thank you.
Alright, thank you. And sitting next to me is the Neighborhood Assistant, Dylan Buck. Alright, thank you. Let's get this going. First, start off with public safety report on Honolulu Fire Department. Are you here?
Yes, good evening. Can you hear me?
Yes, you can.
Alright, awesome. Thank you. My name is Kaleo Kea. I'm a firefighter with the Central Fire Station Engine One in downtown. These are your Neighborhood Board Incident Statistics for the month of October. In the month of October, there were four responses to structure fires, four wildland or brush fire responses, four nuance, for, excuse me, four nuance, which is activated fire alarms, and also eleven nuisance calls. There are also one hundred and seven medical emergencies, nine motor vehicle crashes and collisions. And your fire safety tip for the month of November is involved with holiday cooking safety. Thanksgiving is a peak day for home cooking fires, with more than three times the daily average for such incidents. Christmas Day and Christmas Eve ranked second and third right behind with twice the amount of the daily average. A few tips are to stay in the kitchen and focus on food when you're cooking on the stove. One of the biggest contributing factors are unattended cooking incidents. Please stay in your home when cooking your turkey and check on it frequently. And if you do desire to have a fried turkey, it is recommended that you purchase a deep-fried turkey from a grocery store or a restaurant and maybe use a fryer that does not use oil. And that's it. Do you folks have any questions?
Alright, thank you. Do we have anyone in our audience who would like to speak? Anyone online who would like to speak? Alright, here none, to none. Thank you very much, Kaleo. You have a great day. Thank you very much.
You have a good evening.
Do you have a question? Oh, board. I forgot. I forgot about the board. Okay, go ahead, Ross.
Hi, Kaleo. Thanks for coming. Just wanted to ask quickly about the recent Saturday evening festivities in our neighborhood. There are a lot of people out and about for a pub crawl. Were there any notable incidents just regarding like medical emergencies, anything of that nature?
You know, we did respond, let's see, this past Saturday, I believe, we were on, we were coming on duty that morning, and I think only one incident was reported that was responded to, a medical emergency. And we don't have that detailed information because that was from a different crew. But I believe there was one that they told us about. But nothing of notable significance that we were aware of.
Any other board member? Alright, here none, to none. Thank you very much. You have a great day, Kaleo. Thank you.
Thank you. Aloha.
Alright, thank you. Alright, remember these, this section, we have a five-minute time limit. Next, we have the Honolulu Police Department, please.
Good evening, Chair Cavalo, and everyone in attendance, Lieutenant Segusio, representing Honolulu Police Department, District One Committee, every responsibility. Thank you, guys, for your time and patience. The information provided today is the total amount of cases for your area. For more statistical information, you can go to the public website, www.honolulupd.org. The statistical information for the past month of October is as follows. So motor vehicle thefts were twelve, previous to that was seven, burglaries three, previous four, thefts thirty-nine, previous thirty-three, UMVs or car breakings is thirteen, previous to that is four, assaults is seventeen, previous nine, sex assault is one, previous month is two, no graffiti cases for both months, and drug offenses is seven, previous month was eight. The total cost per service for your area was two thousand one hundred and thirty-two, compared to one thousand six hundred and sixty-four from the previous month. Just wanted to talk about since Board Member Rossi Sokani brought it up, yeah, with that pub crawl. Just realize this, right, the Hala Baloo was technically canceled for this year, but it actually happened on that day with that pub crawl, yeah? So it was circumvented, the permitting for that was circumvented. They just went ahead and did it, okay? So it's ill-advised. It was very ill-advised. It was very hazardous because we had to reallocate a lot of police personnel for that day. We had to call in overtime. We had to bring in crime reduction units for the mass crowds that were over there. The buses, the buses had to redirect their buses because they could not come down Hotel Street because everyone was standing in the roadway. And we did not have a good grasp on that whole event, yeah? So just realize that, you know, a hope-for-the-best kind of attitude should not be taken for any type of these events, yeah? It should be permitted so that the law enforcement can be situated, set up, and allocated to that event for everyone's protection, yeah? But they just went ahead and did it, so our own constituents are our own worst enemies in regards to that kind of situation. I just wanted to bring that up. Safety tip for the month of November would be on phone scams because we've been receiving a lot of them recently. And they generally involve the capuna, usually involving lottery winnings, outstanding warrants, or missing jury duty, or the yes scam where they try to get your recorded voice saying yes on automated robotic calls. Best way to protect you guys' selves is screen all your calls. Most robotic calls won't continue once they get answering service or go to an answering machine, yeah? Be careful of heavily accented people coming on the phone asking for particular information, especially personal information involving your finances and stuff, and lack of information. They have very lack of information on hand, yeah? They cannot tell you your home address. They cannot tell you the last four of your social. They can't even tell you an account number. So with that being said, if it's like that, if it sounds too good to be true, go ahead and hang up the phone and assume that it's a scam, and ask them to correspond with you via email or via regular postal mail, yeah? At this time, I'm gonna yield back the rest of my time and take any questions from the board.
Alright, thank you very much. Do we have anyone in the public right here in this library who has anything to say or ask? Alright, seeing none. Anyone online who has a question to ask Lieutenant Segusio? Alright, seeing no one online? Any board members? We'll start with Board Member Isakane.
Hi, Lieutenant Segusio. Same question. Thanks for bringing up Saturday night festivities. Sorry to hear it was such an unplanned kind of hazard for your team or staffing. I was kind of wondering where the buses would be going. But just curious, that being said, were there notable like instances, fights, disorderly conducts? Was there a spike with that type of behavior that evening?
Well, I mean, there was no notable incidents that occurred from that situation, but I think it's because we took a handle on the situation by bringing in and allocating more police presence in the area. So with that being said, though, it was very, how can I say, it was very quickly planned. So it wasn't something that we had set up, but I'll leave it up to the great guys that worked that night, great guys and girls that worked that night, and they took care of that whole situation. But yes, there were no notable incidents, no huge, large fights. But just like I said, I mean, we cannot, you know, we cannot just do the hope-for-the-best and see what happens, yeah? It could have turned very bad. I mean, there was a lot of people in the roadway. It could have got really, really bad. We even notified Liquor Commission, and then Liquor Commission also notified, told us to notify HFD to come down. We're gonna be speaking to the Liquor Commission. I think we need a little bit better partnership in regards to them because obviously there was a lot of people drinking and excess that night. So we would love for them to have been present at that location also. I don't know if they did, but they never met up with us, yeah?
Alright, thank you very much. Go ahead, Board Member McCarny.
Thank you, Lieutenant. So I think one of the things with people is if they think that something happens every year, then they assume it happens every year. And so we have coming up the St. Patrick's Day, which I think everybody thinks is gonna happen this year, you know? Because whether they're, most people don't see all the promotion. They just know what usually happens. So perhaps in that sense, in that area, we can anticipate a similar thing happening. So just, I don't know if there's anything that can be done. I don't know that you can un-promote something. But anyway, I just wanted to raise that.
Yeah, no problem. I think one of the issues with the permitting was that there was a lot of restrictions. So the bars, or let's not say bars. They say that establishments in Chinatown didn't agree with most of the restrictions, so they didn't continue with the permitting process. So I think there needs to be a better kind of like go-betweens between the permitting section, Department of Permitting, and the people that are kind of initiating the event. Because you need to have law enforcement there, right? I mean, with these large crowds, right, it could have gone bad. I don't know how to explain it any worse than that, but it could have gone bad. But we were lucky that night that we handled it the best we could, and nothing happened.
Alright, thank you. Do we have any other board members who would like to speak? Go ahead, Board Member Kevin Lai.
Thank you, Chair. Lieutenant, thank you for joining. I just had a quick follow-up question. From your absence last month, your colleague was here. But before that, if you concur that we should probably work with the city to improve the signage at bus stops to help prevent smoking, if you could let us know if this is ever a legal place to lock up a bike. And then again, lastly, the follow-up would be if you could comment on the large monitors at the Chinatown substation, and if there's still one-third of them being used to watch a video game or a TV show, game show, and if you could let us know where that stands, and other comments about the utility of the surveillance system so far. Thank you.
No problem. I'll start off with the buses. The bus stops, yeah, sure. We could do it better signs in regards to the smoking situation. We do issue some citations for people that smoke at the location, but we usually roll up and we usually tell them that they can't be smoking in the area of the pavilion, so they normally move away. So we will hold off on issuing a citation. It's usually when they refuse. If they refuse, we issue a citation. If they continue it, then they're arrested for disorderly conduct. The second photo in regards to motor vehicles or bicycles and mopeds being attached to or fixed to signs with chains and stuff like that, that is illegal. That could be cited, yeah? It has to be on a bicycle receptacle, you know, that metal frame thing that looks kind of like a bike. They can do that. Generally, mopeds should be parked on the street, but I think there's a variance or some leeway that we allow due to the fact that we have a large community of college students in Honolulu in the center of town, so that we allow them to usually attach their mopeds to those bicycle receptacles, yeah? Because of the lack of parking on the streets and toll zones occurring at different times of the day and stuff. In regards to the camera situation, so apologize if you walked in and they were watching a game show in regards to that. But then it's generally there, right? It's generally there so that we can watch CNN, the news. Obviously, you know that there's a lot of things going around in the world today. I'm not even gonna go into that. But we need to be aware and be cognizant of things that's going around in the world because obviously we're watching out for that one instance terrorist act, right? I mean, all of that stuff, right? So it's usually on CNN. Apologize, and then sometimes, you know, CNN, it's kind of a rerun, and the guys probably just were relieving themselves and trying to watch something different. But I apologize for that, but normally it's used for us to watch headline news, yeah?
Thank you, Lieutenant.
No problem.
Thank you very much. So we're gonna go with Board Member Bob Armstrong, and then we'll take the last question from myself. Go ahead, Board Member Armstrong.
Thank you, Chair. Lieutenant, I just wanted to be sure that I understand you correctly about the Halloween event. Was the crowd or the people, the establishment antagonistic toward the police or about law and order, or was it just a large gathering that could have gotten out of control? I just need a little clarification from you, if you don't mind. Thank you.
Normally with that, we usually run, they usually get permitting, and then usually with that, there's attached special duty officers that's allocated to that event, okay? So that we can kind of monitor. Sometimes they put cattle barriers so that we keep people off of the roadway, but there was none because the restrictions that would have been set by the Department of Permitting would have had them to allocate that in the whole event process, I guess. But when they set those restrictions, I don't know exactly what happened, but that permit wasn't granted, okay? But then they went ahead and did the event anyway. You see what I'm trying to say? So you see how dangerous that was, right? And then now they're all spilling into the roadway, then we had to make an executive decision amongst ourselves and get together with OTS so that they could reroute buses to avoid people getting, you know, coming into involuntary contact with the city bus, you know what I'm saying? So from what I've heard from my officers, I wasn't working on that particular night, but the photos that they took and the things that they said, that the moment they came out of the substation, it was shoulder to shoulder. That's how busy it was. And it was all the way, that from Bethel Street all the way to Monicaia, and then bleeding off of the bars and stuff like that. There was no way that buses could pass. That was kind of dangerous, I would think, right? I mean, but imagine you have a certain amount of officers trying to control this crowd. You know, we gotta kind of weigh the rewards and the benefits of trying to antagonize these people onto the sidewalk and even crushing them more onto a smaller sidewalk, or we can just reroute the buses. So guess what? My guys rerouted the buses, and I think that was a great decision, yeah? But I think they need to realize this, right? So anytime an event is being planned in Chinatown, now if they don't like the restrictions, they're just gonna say, "Let's not do it. Let's just go rogue and just do this event anyway." You know what I'm saying? And then we're not gonna get in a round vacation because, you know why? Guess what? They just got away with it on Saturday. So...
I hear you, Lieutenant. Thank you so much.
Alright, thank you very much. Okay, so actually, we're gonna do two more, and that's it, because our time in this section is running out. So before I allow Ross to speak again, I want to ask you two questions. First, I've been getting a lot of complaints, especially from behind the Kukui Tower. They're saying that the police, when they talk to the police and asking them why they're not arresting the people out there that are doing the drugs and all that, the police are telling them straight out that they won't arrest them because they'll go to jail and they'll be out the next day, so there is no reason to arrest them. I find that to be very, very bad. Second of all, I like to talk about the Hala Baloo and raise questions that was asked. So do you think that if Hala Baloo was to go on like it was supposed to be, contained and all that, that it would have been a better scenario than having a bar crawl? Also, one more thing, just so we know this. Markstrom did not plan the bar crawl that was done by the bars themselves, alright? There you go.
Okay, so the first, just the first one, right? I would love to get the officer's name that said that. I would love to see that officer's name. He'll be written up right now, and we would deal with that person. But I truly highly doubt that that happens. It may happen because we've arrested people before, and they've been really, you know what I mean? Like, we've arrested people for promoting dangerous drug in a third degree, crystal meth, crack, okay? And then they're usually seen back on the streets less than a week later. So it might be true, but if my officers had said that, I would love to find out who that officer is so we can write him up. And the second question in regards to the Hala Baloo, let me get to that, right? So the Hala Baloo, yes, it would be actually a better event if it was structured that way. If the Department of Permitting is putting all of these restrictions on the bars and the establishments on having this event, obviously, we weren't consulted, but obviously, the city knows something more than we do also, right? If they're putting these types of restrictions on that, they know that it's gonna be a very heavily promoted event, a lot of people. Things could have happened, okay? And I apologize, Chair Cavalo. There was another question. I forgot what it was. Could you kind of remind me on that one?
No, those two are my main questions. Fine, thank you. And then we're gonna do the last portion coming up, and the last portion will come from Board Member Isakane.
Thank you, Chair, for giving me a second question. Lieutenant Segusio, so, you know, rest assured, I'm not going to ask you about foot patrol statistics this time, but thank you for connecting me with Captain Lynn, by the way. You know, he hasn't responded to me yet, but that's okay. I know he's a busy man. I did want to ask about the general topic of staffing levels for HPD. I know it's been a persistent problem. I think Robert Cavaco Union said it's a staffing crisis. I think I just read an article in Civil Beat citing that there are over four hundred staffing vacancies, which I believe is close to twenty percent. So I'm just wondering if you can offer any insights into new and novel approaches that your department might be taking to try to alleviate this staffing crisis?
Four hundred and nine, to be exact. Four hundred and nine vacancies at this point in time, yeah? So we're trying to refill those things. We're doing a lot in regards to recruitment strategies. One of them is they're doing a lateral transfer. We just had our first lateral transfer from a mainland department happen several weeks ago, so that was one that we had. So that's one thing that they're looking at. They're also looking at recruitment. So in regards to the three thirteens or this patrol work schedule, it was also created, one, to handle staffing issues, and two, was a recruitment tool because you work three days on and you're four days off. So that might be an enticement for people to come in into the department. And then we're doing a email, not email, I'm sorry, internet and TV communication blast on hiring. And we're doing hiring all year round. Names go into a pool, and as classes come up, we allocate those officers that passed the stringent pre-test and screening into the academy, yeah? But just realize this, right? I mean, we do a very stringent screening, right? And then some of the stuffs that we do is almost mimicking recruitment processes of the FBI. So generally, people go through, when I went through, it was almost a year screening. We went through numerous testing and stuff like that. So what we're trying to do also with that is speed up the recruitment process by shortening the screening process down to maybe six months or so.
Alright, thank you very much. We do appreciate it. Thank you for your time, Lieutenant Segusio. Thank you very much for everything.
Thank you. You guys have a great night.
You too. Alright, next up, we're gonna go to item three presentations, yep? We're gonna start with the Ala Park Proof of Concept Designs. Emily Perry and Leah Hong.
Okay. Hi, everyone. My name is Emily Perry, and I'm the Parks for People Program Manager with Trust for Public Land. Thank you, Chair and Neighborhood Board, for having me this evening. Leah Hong is not able to join, but Judith Spilgenbauer is able to join, and she helped with the process for the Proof of Concept. So she'll be able to answer any questions as well. So, sorry. Perfect. Yeah, so I'm here to talk about the work that's been going on at Ala Park and the Proof of Concept process. A little bit of background on the area before we get into the details of the now. Ala Park used to be a pretty abundant area, along with all the Eva-included districts, with water coming down from the mountains, flowing through Loee and meeting up at New Wooni Street. Meeting up, New Wooni Street meeting up with the ocean and creating a mulley vibe where there was abundance of fish. Next slide. Later on, post-Western contacts, in eighteen eighty-nine, the Oahu Rail and Land Company Terminal was established, which is still across the street from the park, next slide. And then following nineteen ninety and the fire of Chinatown, a few years after that, the park was completed as part of the National Park Movement. And the park had a standstand, as you can see, and also had a couple of baseball fields, representing more of what we know of to the park to right now. Next slide. The park also hosted events such as the kukini race from Honolulu to Haleiwa, which was twenty-eight miles, so a little bit more than Americana, as well as a march celebrating Kamehameha, a pool competition, and theatrical plays. The park also hosted community rallies protesting redevelopment evictions in the area. More recent history is mixed. As you probably know, in nineteen ninety, the city had a temporary tent city put in place, but after some incidences, including criminal activity, it was removed a few years later in nineteen ninety-three. But there have been some highlights of the park as well. Ala Park has always been a central place for modern Honolulu skateboarding. A nearby skate shop, APB Board Shop, was named off the original crew that skated at the park. One of the co-founders, Chad, actually helped to redesign and renovate the skate park as it currently was completed in two thousand and two in coordination with the city. Briefly, I'm gonna touch on the benefits of parks, talking about some of the, we already talked about some of the benefits, as you can see, from the community, resilience, and cultural cohesion. Parks can be a gathering place where people can spend time, stay families with their family, and so forth. They also promote exercise and healthy activities, whether it be through the skate park or through baseball or other such sporting events, or even just walking through the park. There also are positive impacts on mental health and well-being. Being in a park, especially in a green space where there is a, where there's all the gray infrastructure in the downtown area, can have benefits linked to, as well, climate adaptations to heat. Trees in parks provide shade, especially as summers are getting hotter. It's nice to stand under the shade of a tree. Parks also can help strengthen local economies and create job opportunities, attracting residences, visitors, and businesses, as well as providing job opportunities. Moving forward into the more recent grassroots community engagement, Trust for Public Land in coordination with some of our partners did a series of engagements, including historical research, which we saw some of the pictures from previously, as well as community engagement and feedback. That included a handful of listening sessions, park listeners, where people would go in the park and listen to what users had to say about their perspectives of the park, as well as focus groups, an anthology group, and community surveys, and so forth, where people just also were in the park, seeing how people were using the park, as well as doing community engagements to see what people thought of the park in the past, present, and what they want in the future. TPL and partners have been working to activate the park, to get more people in the park, to get it used more, and just to really make it more of a community space. And that included a handful of skate classes, dog training, the Dragon Boat Festival, Lunar New Year's, clean-ups, and so forth. For more information, you can go to the link. I think there's also a QR code later on that you can scan, but it's on the TPL website, so. These are just some pictures from the event to kind of really showcase like how vibrant the park can be when it is being activated. The first one is a keiki who receives some skateboard gear for free and then receives some lessons. The other one is from the Dragon Boat Lunar New Year Festival. The bottom middle, there's a sumo wrestling competition going on. And then on the bottom right, in coordination with Kamehameha schools, they painted murals in the park and in the surrounding area to brighten up the space. Going more into the Proof of Concepts, using all of those engagements that I mentioned in the past, in the past slide, in partnership with the University of Fort E Community Design Center, they took the feedback from the community and put them in, and through design meetings at different locations in around Ala Park downtown Chinatown area, participants then narrowed down all of the ideas from the community into re-Proof of Concepts and then into one. And so if you also want more information, the link and QR code is right there as well. And these are just some examples on how information and how people's perspectives on what they want to see in the future of the park was taken. So you can see some design boards and people ranking like if they wanted more seating or if they wanted more trees or stuff like that. So that was all taken into account. And this is actually the final Proof of Concept. So the final Proof of Concept incorporated all these ideas, and you can see that there are four zones as colored. If you go to the site, you'll be able to see more details. But the four zones was the upper orange one is the community zone. The blue zone is going to be the recreation zone. The green zone is the waterfront zone, and then the yellow zone is the Chinatown gateway zone. the um, green zone is the waterfront zone, and then the yellow zone is the China, Chinatown gateway zone. Um, and each zone has different aspects that are meant to um, incorporate the ideas, um, the community ideas, and also just put more activity engagement in the park. So now that we have this proof of concept, um, utilizing everyone's ideas, what are the next steps? Um, so right now, we are currently working on um, with parks, the City Parks Department, to actually see how we can uh, work on construction to implement uh, certain aspects. Um, this is gonna be in phases because it is pricey and looking at resources and capacity, obviously, um, is one concern. But um, we are in conversations with parks and um, in, in the starting phases of that. Um, part of that is also to create a memorandum of understanding or agreement between CPL and DPR so that we can ensure that some of these um, aspects do get implemented. Um, we, of course, as I mentioned, resources are always a concern. We are looking, um, we are looking for potential grants and funding opportunities as well. Um, and as I mentioned before, we are going to continue programming in the park. So there are a few events that are coming up on Sunday, December third. There's gonna be a super skate party. Um, there was a picture before of a kid getting free gear. It's the same concept. Um, and then we are giving to two middle schools, I believe, to Isaac Malani is one of them, where we're working with students to get some of those, that free gear, as well as um, in twenty twenty-four, on January thirteenth, an urban Makikiki event, which is going to be celebrating um, Kiki season, as well as bringing in different cultures in the area for games, food, stuff like that. And then Friday, um, on February third in twenty twenty-four, there's gonna be the Lunar New Year Celebration, which is one of the annual events that goes on. Um, we also are working on getting a steering committee. We really wanna gather more organizations and community members who are interested in reactivating Ala Park to guide the future of the work, um, and allocate funding for this project. We really think that Ala Park, um, you know, is central to Chinatown and can, as we mentioned before, has a rich history that we want to bring back into the breadline. Um, so we're looking for uh, members. So if you are interested, you can reach out to me. Um, and then, thank you. Um, my contact information is on there. Um, it's emily dot perry at tpl dot com org, sorry, dot org. Um, and if you have any questions or comments, I can also take those at this time.
All right. Thank you very much. Um, just before we go ahead and take any questions, just wanna make a correction. You got February third down as a Friday. February thirty is actually Saturday.
Thank you.
All right. Thank you. So do we have anyone in our audience here at the library who would like to speak? Who would like to ask any questions? All right. Here and none, sitting none. Anyone online who would like to ask any questions? All right. Here and none and sitting none. We're gonna go ahead to our board members. Anybody, board members? Go ahead, um, Board Member McCroney.
Thank you, Emily. I think we would all agree that we'd love to see Ala Park be a great resource for our community. So thank you for the work that you're doing. Do you have an idea of the time, timeline and funding needs uh, for Ala Park? And are there any other hurdles that you face besides those two?
Right. So um, for funding, we are currently, the total proof of concept um, project, and Judith also online can maybe speak a little bit more to this. I believe if we implemented all of the aspects, it was gonna be thirty-five million. Um, and obviously taking a step back from that, that's very large scale and I guess that we're trying to work on phases. Um, so we're looking at doing some, working with parks, we've identified some things like lighting for safety, especially during evenings, as well as maybe um, looking at the bathroom and renovating bathroom, that seems to be a area of concern. Um, and looking at like some of the smaller aspects. So um, we're thinking more towards like three to five million for this phase. And then for the next few years, working on construction, design, planning and permitting, which is ten percent of that three million. Three to five, yeah.
Is uh, Trust for Public Lands bringing in any funding?
Yes. So we are looking for, um, we're trying to coordinate with parks on grants. Um, there are federal grants that um, can do some of this, but obviously we are looking for other um, funding opportunities as well.
Okay. Thank you.
All right. Thank you. So next we have Board Member Bob Armstrong.
Thank you, Chair, and I appreciate uh, the opportunity to speak. I've been involved in several phases of, of uh, this study and I'm really excited to hear this presentation. Emily, thank you for loving on Ala Park, which I think is the, probably after Kapia Lani, the most important public space we have in the city of Honolulu. And it has been left to its own devices, uh, and certainly to its own decay over the pandemic. And I probably spend uh, a, a, a good amount of time, at least every week, walking through it, if not in it. And um, and I can honestly say, partly because of your attention to it, um, Ala Park is back and it is improving and it's safer and things like what you just said, lighting and, you know, and safety measures and landscaping and that kind of stuff, would go so far to bolster the public and its love and appreciation for Ala Park. And I, I just wanna again, thank you for everything that you're doing. Um, it's a, it's really a thankless task, take under your wing a park and to reimagine it and to have those conversations and to really think about its long-term importance to all of us. But if it for some reason should be taken away or if we um, uh, ignore it, um, the impact would be devastating. And so I just wanna compliment you, the Trust for Public Lands, and, and everyone who's been working on this for so long and for qui- so quietly, um, to resurrect Ala Park. Um, I don't think that there is something that is as integral or as important to our community as this. And so, um, please let me know how I could help and how we can trigger the community to uh, be involved. Obviously, and I wanna say this as a last sentence, anything we can do to further the skateboarding activities, since they have been key stewards to taking out the drug trade and those very um, despicable elements that shouldn't be in any park, um, we wanna bolster that. We wanna reward the young community, the young people of our community for what they've done. Um, it's one of the best stories in Honolulu that uh, that, you know, young people have taken this place and made it their own and have protected it. Along with your involvement, it just is an exciting community development. And, and so, um, onward, forward, and anything we can do, we need to support and bolster you. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Bob Armstrong. Mr. Bob Armstrong, thank you. That's, so board members, remember to keep your time down. Thank you for thanking Emily and everyone else. That was a thank you, wasn't a question, but keep your thank you straight and to the point, please, moving forward. Thank you, Mr. Armstrong. That was very good. Any other board members, anything else to say on this? No? Okay. So here and none, I'll go ahead and end this. So once again, I see what you're saying. Thank you very much. I believe Bob Armstrong, Kevin Lai, and myself has been to basically all of these meetings. Excellent job that you guys have been doing. And we look forward to a rejuvenated Ala Park, which will make for a better Chinatown. Thank you very much for everything you do. Thank you. Bye-bye. All right. Thank you. So next, we have up the State Department of Health, DOH, Adult Mental Health Division, Evilay Resource Center. That was a time. Hold on. Evilay Resource Center, opening target date is January twenty twenty-four. Chad Puanagi?
Puanagi.
Puanagi. There you go. Go ahead, sir.
Jack Carvalho, thanks for having us. Thanks for the board for uh, allowing us to tell you about our exciting initiative and partnership with the city. Uh, with me I have Sean Almamoto, who's with Department of Health, and Mr. Anton Kupke, who's the Director of the Department of Community Services. So um, as you folks all know, um, in, in our, in this community, there are a lot of folks who have behavioral health needs, a lot of the chronically homeless, people with substance abuse and behavioral health issues. Um, as one, obviously, to help this population, I, I think this collaboration will be very helpful to this community. Um, but uh, what we've, uh, are in the process of finalizing is a MOU in a partnership with the city to um, use the property at eight oh six uh, Evilay Road, which is the beautiful building next to IHS and PetSmart. And we'll, uh, we're going to uh, turn it into a behavioral health crisis center. Um, the, the, this is, is gonna be a resource for law enforcement and other community partners to bring uh, individuals in crisis to the facility and get uh, assessed and triaged and linked with appropriate community services. Um, some of the folks are going to stay on the bottom floor overnight. Uh, if they require ongoing uh, mental health needs and stabilization, they'll be uh, referred to the upstairs mezzanine uh, level, which will be an extended stay where people can stay up for ten to fourteen days for uh, extended observation, medical detoxification. Uh, of course, our, our team will be including people like uh, psych- psychiatrists, RN nurses, um, peer specialists, people with shared experience or lived experience, uh, security and case managers to help link people with um, community resources. So we'll be linking people with uh, with no services to services and, and having, including housing. And also we'll be uh, working with people, uh, existing services for, for those that already have uh, case management in place. Um, and the, uh, the top two floors will be uh, supportive housing. Um, so uh, we're close to finalizing our MOU, um, the capacity of the bottom two floors. The, the first floor will be about um, sixteen or so to start, and the mezzanine level will be up to about ten. The primary uh, neighborhoods that we're targeting first for the rollout of our program will be uh, this uh, downtown Chinatown area, Loi Palama and uh, Waikiki. You folks are the first to care about this uh, initiative and um, I will let Mr. Kupke have some words.
Thank you, Doctor. I, I think that what this is, is we've evolved from the city working and, and trying to work with the state and then collaborating on programs with the state back with partnerships. So we're gonna be doing multiple sets of activities like this, where we're gonna enter into partnerships with the state, where the city's gonna provide the locations and the facilities, and the state's gonna run programs. We think that, that coming together like that, that's gonna really give us some leverage. When we did Wow Housing Now, we really did a great job in housing people. We had three hundred and eight families, eight hundred and fifty people we were able to take off the streets and house. But what that did, it left us a different demographics left on the street. We have a lot of single males and we have a lot of mental health issues. And so we're trying to pick activities now, like we did market segmentation before for the families. We're picking activities that can address the demographics of what we have on the street. I think the Evilay Center's taken a while to put together because of the way we funded, funded the building of it, but now we've come together and we've come to an agreement and I expect everything to be finalized shortly. We wanted to come here to the Neighborhood Board to let you know what's going on, field any questions you have. And, and I have other projects that I wanna talk to you about, but I wanna make sure we put questions on this. Thank you, Chair.
Anyone else? No? Okay. So do we have any questions from our members in our library here tonight? Go ahead, please, Ms. Stack.
Um, seems in some ways similar to what's happening or what was proposed to be happening in the Punta Vi Rest Stop, which is also gonna have like, I understand beds upstairs and things like that. So I'm just wondering what the status is on the Punta Vi Rest Stop and is this sort of a duplication or is it targeting?
The Punta Vi Rest Stop, that's, that's a very good question. So there, there's really two, two oper- operations there. There's Punta Vi Rest Stop and then the H four next to it. And so the Punta Vi Rest Stop is really for, for functioning uh, folks that really are homeless that need facilities. They can go there, they do their laundry, they can take a shower. You, you'd be surprised how many people go to work. They just are homeless, right? They don't have a house. And so the Rest Stop does that. It also does some, uh, it has mail, so they can collect mail, get their uh, their pieces in place for housing. It also, we put some, uh, we have case managers there and Greg Payton will be here. I think he'll hand out a, a piece on mental, for mental health and food. But that, that's a really different population. Next door at H four, really, that's run by Kalie Palama Health on two floors. And those two floors are medical treatment. This is, this is mental health treatment that we're talking about, but that's medical treatment and the medical respite on the floor above it, where rather than somebody get treated and then go back out to the street, they can go and, and spend one, two, three months getting, you know, getting well and everything else. And then they're able to take, take on their journey better. Top floor is run by steadfast and it's affordable housing. So really different market segmentations of individuals that we're kinda working with.
And the uh, great, great question. The um, the intent of the crisis center is to be more like an emergency psychiatric emergency room more so than um, Punta Vi Rest Stop or H four. So um, we're going to be taking uh, people from the community who get brought in by police. Police, uh, when they bring people in who are in uh, behavioral health crisis to the emergency rooms, they, they take people on this statue called the MH one. So it's, so the patients who are gonna be brought to our facility are gonna be pretty close to what MH ones are, uh, could be agitated people, people acutely suicidal. And because we, we'll have nurses there and psychiatrists that will, will be able to provide immediate uh, assessment and care, including um, uh, involuntary medication and um, uh, uh, medical assessment for subacute medical.
Go ahead, Ms. Stack.
After these people are treated, will they be then released into the surrounding community? Will they be um, located in other, in other areas of the county or what's the plan um, after treatment?
So similar to uh, ER setting, um, uh, either patients who are downstairs for the twenty-three fifty-nine uh, beds, we'll, we'll try our best to refer them to other uh, appropriate facilities like crisis shelters that are at LCRS in Salt Lake or there, couple up, up, up at the State Hospital ground, one in Coast City, places like that, like one in Tamaki, uh, patients who are, stay a little bit longer, that depends on fourteen, uh, mezzanine level, we'll, we'll have more time to link them with appropriate uh, disposition like residential drug treatment or group homes or crisis shelters. So uh, ideally, um, we'll have a better plan discharging the patient than what, what they came from. But probably the majority of them will uh, be homeless still.
All right. Thank you. Do we have any other um, residents that would like to say anything or ask any questions in this library? If not, we'll go ahead to online. Anyone online? Not seeing none online. We'll go ahead to our board members. Any board members? We'll start with Lori McCroney. Board Member Lori McCroney, please.
Thank you very much for the work you're doing to try to help these folks and help our community at the same time. Um, I, I have a question and maybe I just am out of date. So if somebody needs help, but they don't want help, um, then you really can't, is there any way that you can help them or do they have to ask for help?
That, that's a really good question. Uh, in general, the answer is, is, is we work with people and, and understand their needs and desires. And to your question, if they don't want help, however, this, that's what makes this such a big situation is that police can pick people up on the street that are uh, armed to themselves or to others, that have mental health issues and they, and bring them to the center for treatment.
Thank you. And my other question is, um, we're aware, I'm on the Alzheimer's Association and it's Alzheimer's Month, by the way. Um, but we understand and we know there's a lot of people with Alzheimer's and other dementias that are on the street. And um, that's a difficult um, disease to treat medically. Have you encountered that or do you have a plan for people with dementias on the street?
Great question, but a very tough question. Um, so in my work doing um, homeless outreach, I not infrequently encounter uh, homeless individuals who have cognitive uh, deficits, uh, including dementia. Probably if we get brought a, a patient who has moderate or severe dementia, that probably wouldn't be the most ideal place for them to go. Uh, if, if we, we presented a patient who has uh, milder forms of cognitive impairment for which we could work with our community partners to find them appropriate disposition. Some, uh, some of those patients are difficult to place and they, they end up uh, being kind of stuck in the facility for a while. But um, I, I think uh, with consultation with the police and, and their training, they get through things like the CIT process. I, I think they're going to be able to pick up people who are moderately or severely demented and, or which uh, uh, their self-care is poor enough that they, they should probably go to an emergency room now. they should probably go to an emergency room, not a facility.
All right.
If we can help, let us know. The Alzheimer's Association, we do, we have done training with HPD and HFD, you know, and so if there's anything that we can do, then feel free to reach out to us.
That's great. We really appreciate that, you know, and, and keep your eyes on things like the grants and aid program that the city has. That's open right now for application, and it closes on November 22nd. So you can apply for money for your organization to help there. You know, the Department of Community Services at the City County Honolulu, we manage the inventory of special needs housing, which range from mental illness to youth to all sorts of different things. Across the island, we have 68 properties, and we have 2,200 rooms active on Oahu today.
Thank you. Board Member Ross Isukani, please.
Thank you, Chair. Thanks for coming and, you know, letting us know this news. I think this is great news, definitely. I, I know the, the challenge has been, once these facilities come up, how do you get someone committed to serve them? Thank you to the state for stepping in and, and being willing to help. Can I understand what the details are behind this MOU? Is there a committed time that the state is saying, yeah, we're going to commit X years to serving this facility? Is there a dollar mile? Is it subject to legislative approval every single session?
So the city wants this to be a long-term relationship, and so in the MOU, we'll put, we'll put a long term. But that being said, funding for a program like this comes on a year-by-year basis or two-years basis. So we'll have to have an ounce, so the state, if they, for whatever reason, don't continue the funding, then they'll, they'll have an ounce. But basically, we turn the, we're going to do some renovation to, to make it appropriate for what, what the state wants to do. We're going to turn the keys over to the state. State will collect the rents upstairs for the affordable housing, and through that rent, they'll pay the bills, and they'll, they'll do the upkeep. City will be responsible for major, major facility issues. So the attitude is long-term, but we're subject to funding cycles.
All right. Thank you. Next, we have Board Member Bob Armstrong.
Thank you, Chair. I appreciate your recognition. Congratulations, and thank you, Mr. Cruckie and others, for your continued vigilance on this issue. It is so important that we not lose focus. And so with that, I'd like to ask, are there any legislative initiatives that you're looking at for January at the state capitol as a result of your work? And then finally, my other question is, I know this isn't the essence of what you're using money for, but is there a way to try a little bit of money to publicize the good things that we're doing on behalf of our neighborhood, so that citizens know that folks with mental illnesses are being taken care of in a humane way? Thank you.
Thank you, Bob, for that, those comments. You know, in terms of, of this upcoming legislative session, we're just putting the plans together, but I think categories that are already there are mental health treatment, both in dealing with, with folks as a, their ability to make decisions, and how you can help those decisions along. We're also looking for more funding for some of these facilities that we're going to be doing. You heard the governor talk about Kalahale's, and the city also asked funding for some of those, because really, for, for homeless, you know, you, you don't really address homelessness until somebody finds a bed. Bed of many flavors, right? It could be stabilization, it could be drug treatment, mental health treatment, it could be transitional, it could be work treatment, you know, or just permanent supportive housing. So that's what we're trying to do, and I, I think through this legislative session, we're going to get millions of dollars that are, produce a lot of beds in this community. And the governor, I just met with the governor and mayor today, and they're very much in tune together, they're committed together, and they're committed to a funding that will do that. So we'll continue on that. I have another 70-room property at Kalahale, and maybe I'll come back to another, next meeting and kind of brief you all my plans on that property as well.
All right. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
One more comment about that. So one, one thing that the state is interested in is continued, continued and greater use of the assisted community treatment law. This is, ACT law has been in, in the books for about 10 years, been revised a couple of times. It can be a, a great tool for helping people who don't want help and who are unsafe in the community when they're not on their medications or staying sober. And so the state is hoping that we'll have greater implementation from, from community-wide agencies to seek and obtain act orders on patients.
All right. Thank you. All right. That's all the questions we have for you now. Thank you for coming, and really appreciate your presentation. Thank you. Appreciate it. All right. Next, we're going to be moving to item number four, public concerns. First one upcoming up for public concerns, go ahead.
My name is Tim Nelson, Chief of SAP, the Congressman of Ed Case, here in Washington, DC this week. I just want to thank the community for letting me briefly speak to you. I know a lot of people have focused on the problems of Washington, making a Speaker of the House that comes forward and lead the chamber. I just want to reassure you that despite that news, the congressman is actually working quite hard to deal with a number of concerns for the state, particularly through his funding committee assignment for the preparations committee. And I'll just give three examples that I think are relevant to all of us today. First is, he worked to help get $16 billion to help Maui and its recovery efforts, and through that work, he's also directly engaging with FEMA to see what can be done here on Oahu, help prevent wildfires from being a risk to our community as well. He knows that housing and homelessness is obviously a key concern. Right now, there's about $1.3 billion being used to help veterans with housing assistance programs nationwide. There's a strong debate in Congress right now about the non-veterans programs, so we're working really hard to ensure that in this fiscal year, the other programs that go to the county, the state, and NGOs can also continue to be funded at strong, robust levels. In addition to funding, he wants to make sure the funds are used well. So he worked with the whole delegation to get about $2 billion to help close Red Hill. But even though the funds are there, he's working really hard to make sure that military's doing its job. So he's regularly engaging with senior military officials, meeting with them to ensure that we as quickly and as safely as possible close the facility and identify what needs to be done over the long term to ensure that the aquifer is healthy and safe. So I just want to stop there, because I know I have limited time, and respect everyone's time here, but I'm born and willing to field any questions you might have, or take any concerns that you have, back to the congressman.
All right. Thank you very much. So basically, you can speak, and all we can ask is maybe like to get exact information as time and things like that, dates and all that, because this is public concerns. So we can't answer any detailed questions at this time. But no, no, no problem. So in the future, what we'll do is we'll go ahead and set you up on this, put you on the agenda, and if you make it, you make it. If you don't, you don't. But you can be assured, if you go ahead and email me your reports, I will have it on the Google Drive every single month for you guys, okay? So we'll get you guys on. Thank you very much. Okay? Do we have anyone else in the public who would like to speak that is here at the library? Seeing none, hearing none. Do we have anyone in, online? All right. See? Go ahead, Ms. La, you have your two minutes.
Chair, I just wanted to note that I'm going to raise an issue or two during Section 8B later on the agenda with your permission, just think that's not necessarily pertinent to the general public right now.
Okay, so, so, hold on. So this is public concerns, so like, anything to do with, anything that's on the agenda, we can bring it up during that time when it comes up, yeah? What agenda did you want me to look at? What, eight, what?
Oh, rather, 8B, the item about board concerns. I just have a comment or two to make before we discuss the item itself.
Okay, so yeah, when we get to new business, we'll go ahead and bring that up, okay?
Thank you.
All right. Okay, so next, hearing no one and seeing no one else that has any public concerns, we'll go ahead and we'll move on to item five, elected officials. We'll go start with Governor Josh Green's representative, Sean Hamamoto.
Thank you, Chair Carvalho. Good evening, good evening, board members. It's a pleasure to be here. I'll get right into the responses from the inquiries that were posed last month. First, Board Member McDonald, your question was, as Hiko reported that the fuel costs affected.
Excuse me, so hold on, hold on, hold, oh, hold on. So remember, please address him as Mr. McDonald at this time.
Oh, okay. Sorry, Mr. McDonald. Is, they are planning to reduce electricity costs if fuel costs are reduced in the future. This is actually a question that should be chose opposed to Hawaiian Electric, is the response I got. Next, Mr. Thompson, what is the governor's plan to encourage the expansion of renewable energy in the state? And this is from the state energy office's website. The state of Hawaii has a bold energy agenda to achieve 100% clean energy by the year 2045. Along with reducing our island's dependency on fossil fuels and increasing efficiency measures, the Clean Energy Plan is also contributing to the state's economic growth. Because Hawaii is committed to repowering the clean energy market, we have embraced both solutions that will help develop this competitive industry, making Hawaii one of the leaders in the clean energy race. The Hawaii State Energy Office leads statewide energy security and resilience initiatives while catalyzing energy independence and decarbonization. And next, Mr. Armstrong, was very concerned about the recent bullying of state appointees and officials. Will this get better before it gets worse? What is the prognosis? The reply is, there are entities that monitor for credible threats. We cannot make a prediction whether it will get better or worse, especially in light of the internet and social media that provide avenues for people to say whatever they want. Our hope is that by monitoring, we can prevent any ill-perceived events. Next, Mr. Isukani, do mainland homeowners qualify to participate in the Hawaii Fire Relief Housing Program? And the answer is yes. Mainland homes can be used for this program, however, please note that this program does not provide financial assistance to any of the parties participating. And finally, Chair Carvalho, there are rumors that Hiko will raise its prices due to the Maui wildfire. What is the state going to do about this? The Hawaii Public Utilities Commission, or PUC, regulates all chartered, franchised, certificated, and registered public utility companies operating in the state. Reviews and approves rates, tariffs, charges, and fees determines the allowable rate of earnings in establishing rates, issues guidance concerning the general management of franchise or certificated utility businesses, and acts on requests for the acquisition, sale, disposition, or other exchange of utility properties, including mergers and consolidations. Consumers and rate payers are encouraged to engage with the PUC. Per the consumer page on its website, the PUC provides consumers assistance and can help you make a complaint against a regulated entity. Engage with the PUC by submitting public comments on matters pending before the PUC and find answers. And with that, I'm available for any more questions to take back.
All right. Thank you. First, we'll start with any members, anyone in our library here? Any residents want to ask the governor's representative anything? Seeing none, hearing none. Any residents online? Okay, go ahead, Mr. McDonald. Mr. McDonald, you're muted.
Hello?
Yeah, I can hear you now.
Can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Thank you, Chair, and thank you for being here. So I'm, to follow up with both my and the chair's question from last month, you said that, your, your answer to my question was, if there's any program to, for Hiko to try to lower rates for consumers, and that your answer was, I have to ask Hiko about that. And then your answer to Chair Carvalho's question from last month showed several ways that your office and the state regulate Hiko and its rates and services. So I'm a little confused how you can so tightly regulate this industry and not encourage them or have any programs in place, place to lower the, lower the rates for the good people of Hawaii who already pay, I might add, three times the national average per kilowatt hour. The people of Hawaii pay three times the national average per kilowatt hour for electricity, and your office approves all of their rate hikes, all of their rate and their profit margins, and all of their statements, but you can't do anything to encourage the lowering of these rates? Am I understanding that correctly?
Your question is, can the PUC do anything to encourage the lowering of rates?
Yes.
Okay.
Because you seem to be able to very easily raise the rates and approve that, why can't your office be better involved in lowering the rates when we already pay three times the national average in Hawaii?
Okay, I'll bring up that.
All right.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. McDonald. Before we hit any board members, so the reason I went to Mr. McDonald because, because of the situation right now. Okay, so can I, is there any other residents or anyone in the community who has a question to ask of the governor's representative? All right. Hearing none and seeing none. Now we'll go to the board members. Board Member Lori McCarty.
Thank you, Chair. Thank you. I'm a member of the Honolulu Men's Shed, which is now the Honolulu Kupuna Shed, and we were using a warehouse on Pier 20, and we have to, we were kicked out the end of December. Fortunately, we found a new place. But would it be possible for somebody to harbor, from Harbors Division to come in and maybe give us an update on what's happening in the harbor, which is part of our, I don't think Pier 19 is, but as we get into Aloha Tower and that whole harbor area, it would be really interesting to know what's going on in that side of our community.
So you would like the Harbors Division to come in, come in and give an update on Pier 20?
No, on anything like in our district, but it could see Pier 20, all the way out to where Falls of Clyde and, you know, all of that potential development is. I believe that's Harbors. It would be interesting to know for us, because that's a pretty major part of our community. And something's happening since we got kicked out. I figure that something's, something's brewing. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Thank you. Good question. Any other board members have any questions for the governor's representative? Go ahead, Board Member La.
Thank you, Chair, and thank you, Sean. I won't fall too far not sticking around for the Citizen Patrol report coming up, but it will highlight some activities on the Diamond Head Lawn of the state capitol grounds. Was wondering if you might be able to let us know next month or next time that we meet, if there are any plans to help regulate the colony that appears to wax and wane over there, and, and how that might relate to some of the plans for Kalahale, formal structures. And I guess just to tag on to Member McCarty's comment, I do know that we did have the head of Harbors come and let us know about the future plans of somehow building either a second bridge or access into the harbor, and then eventually, you know, gating the harbor itself as a protective measure. It'd be interesting to see where funding and timeline for that stands. Thank you.
Board Member Isukani, please.
Yeah, you know, not sure if we need a detailed answer now, but I, I would like to get some updates on the emergency housing proclamation, just in terms of progress, in terms of projects that might be getting pushed through. I, I know that another proclamation was released, I think reinstating some of the exemptions from transparency rules. So these are things of interest, so, you know, maybe at the appropriate time.
All right. Thank you. Okay, seeing no other hands up from the board members, we'll go ahead and move on. Thank you for your time, Sean. We appreciate it. Thank you. All right. All right. Next, we'll go ahead and move on to Mayor Rick Blangiardi's representative, Ian Sante. Are you online, Ian?
Yes. Good evening, Chair. Again, Ian Sante, Deputy Director, Emergency Services Department, Mayor Blangiardi's rep. I'm going to review from last mi, last meeting, some questions and concerns that were raised. The first one.
Excuse me, Mr. Sante, Mr. Sante. We're having a hard time hearing you. Could you speak louder, please?
Is this better? Hello?
Go ahead.
Is this better?
No, no, a little bit louder.
Is this better? This is a lot better?
Yeah, so we'll try the best we can. Go ahead.
Yeah, sorry, I'm not sure, maybe the wifi. Okay, the last board meeting, a resident raised concerns about not enough public restrooms in the downtown area. Right now, the answer is, there is no immediate Okay, the last board meeting, a resident raised concerns about not enough public restrooms in the downtown area. Right right now, the answer is there is no immediate plans of the city to establish restrooms in the downtown Chinatown area at this point. Another question was raised by you, uh, the chair on behalf of the residents for the Chinatown Gateway Plaza about the Sun Yat-sen Park and understanding benches create a gathering place for illegal activities. The city's Department of Facility Maintenance said the low retaining wall structure and meandering sidewalk is part of the park facility and is not part of the roadway. These facilities were turned over to DPR with the mall area in Chinatown. Removal of the low retaining wall that may be used by the public as seating areas would require substantial regarding of the plant regrading of the planter area that contains the large monkey pods, irrigation system backflow and preventers. The removal of the retaining wall will require the lowering of the planter area to prevent the planter area to erode onto the meandering sidewalk and would detrimentally affect the street trees that exist in the raised area. Um, and lastly, from back in October of earlier this year, DDC also said the decision to remove, reconfigure the seating wall is not a DDC issue. The next one is a atheist, um, question was raised by a member Li in regards to speaking with allegedly homeless individual that's diagnosed with Tourette's and that no longer receives the proper medication. The question was about can the core program um meet with this gentleman to offer assistance? The core program has been out looking for the gentleman and when they do meet and uh reach him, they will be reaching out towards him for assistance. The next one is about rail ridership and the city's Department of Transportation says the ridership can be found on their website and provides you further information there, but the average daily ridership has remained consistent for the past two months. It's riding about three thousand customers a day. The highest has been thirty-seven hundred thirty-seven in September and the lowest twenty-four hundred. Last month, October, was three thousand forty-four was the average. The highest is thirty-six ninety-nine and the lowest was twenty-one seventy-one. And then what is the cost of operating the rail system and how much is subsidized? That FY twenty-four skyline operating budget is eighty-five million dollars. The fare box recovery was projected to be only fourteen point two percent during FY twenty-four. The remaining eighty-five percent would be projected portion of the operating budget of subsidies. I don't have anything else to report, um, please make sure you go out and get a copy of the latest mayor's um newsletter at oneohahu.org/newsletter. And I don't have anything else. Available for questions.
All right, thank you. Do we have anyone in the library who wishes to address the mayor's representative? Hear none, see none, we'll move on. Do we have anyone online who wants to address the mayor? All right, Mr. McDonald.
Hello? Thank you, Chair, and thank you, Mr. Santi, for being here. I just want to uh again make sure if I heard that correctly, we have uh ridership, the fares for ridership of the rail is less than fifteen percent of the operating cost of the rail? Am I hearing that right?
No, um. How did I explain? The the eighty-five percent is what the operating cost is, the fifteen percent is what they're able to collect. Is that what the statement you're asking, sir?
So you're, I believe that if, correct me if I'm wrong, but I believe that you said that the operating cost per year is eighty-five million dollars and that the receipts or the collection box of the money we take in for from ridership for the rail is less than fifteen, it was like fourteen point two or fourteen point eight percent, something like that.
Yeah, I'm sorry, you are, yes, that is correct, that is correct.
So, so the of the eighty-five million dollars a year that we're paying to operate this, only less than fifteen percent of that is being paid by the people that are using it and the rest of it's been paid by the taxpayers who are clearly not using it. Is that correct?
It's being paid by the portion that needs to be subsidized, as specific of who's actually paying for it, I could not answer that question. We would have to get more-
The subsidized, the subsidized portion is the taxpayers, right? The taxpayers subsidize it.
I I would not-
To the best of my knowledge, there are no private inter- there are no private companies that are sponsoring the rail, unless I'm mistaken.
Uh, we can follow up for you, sir, but I do, I can tell you that I do know that there are federal grants and I'm not sure if the federal grants are also part of the subsidy or it's purely the taxpayer money. So we can actually follow up with you on a question back to DTS to get a very specific of how the breakdown, so we are all on the same page of the subsidy. Is that okay, sir?
That would be fine, thank you.
Thank you.
All right, thank you. Do we have any other residents online who would like to address the mayor's representative? All right, hear none, see none, we'll go to our board members. Board member Armstrong, please.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, I appreciate your recognition. Just a very quick question that I brought up last month that I think Ian, you had already left by the time I raised this, and that is the city seems not to uh be calculating or accumulating the red light district uh violations in our neighborhood anymore. At least the last time I checked, it wasn't, there there hasn't been any update for several months. Since this is a a feature for deterrence, that's the whole idea behind red light cameras, um, is there a good reason why we're not reporting that anymore? Um, I think it would be helpful for the public to see its effectiveness and the kind of revenue that is being uh generated as a result.
Um, we can follow up with the Department of Transportation for that information, sir. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Do we have any other board members, does any other question? All right, Board Member Li.
Chair, Mr. Santi, I wonder if you could next time give us an update on the status of the relocation plan for the offices in Honolulu Halei temporarily to Waikiki Vista Building on Kapilani or elsewhere? And uh if that's still in line, if so, when that might take place? Thank you.
Thank you, your question is noted, thank you.
All right, and do we have any other board members? All right. Um, Board Member Isukani, please.
Hi, Mr. Santi, um, so Lieutenant Segusio was here from the Honolulu Police Department commenting on the vacancies currently with HPD and I was asking him for the new and potentially novel approaches that HPD was looking to take to fill that vacancy, that that gap in terms of staffing, which is really important. Uh, this is totally appropriate for follow-up later, but I was just wondering if there's anything specific from the mayor and I'm talking new, novel strategic thinking uh to help kind of curb this really large gap in terms of HPD staffing. Thank you.
No problem, sir, we can bring that to the mayor's office and ask them for follow-up. Thank you.
All right, any other board members? See none, hear none, I'll give a final on this really quick. I would like a detailed report on the question that I'd asked last month. We want, and I'm gonna tell it straight, we want you to get rid of that cesspool in front of Senior Sen Park. If there's a problem because of the trees there, then cut those trees down, fix it up and put some nice melon plants out there because right now that is a drug-infested area affecting our people at Gateway, um Chinatown Gateway. It is terrible and I will bring this up even if I have to go to the city council, but I would like to see a detailed report on why you guys cannot do that. That is very important. Number two, I would like DTS to see us, but DTS is keeping refusing me. They said that every single question that we ask, they have to get one individual for each question that we ask. That is unacceptable. Any business run like that would fail. I want DTS here, we're asking for DTS, we've asked for DTS for the last several years and DTS is not coming to us. And that is it for now, thank you.
Thank you, Chair, we will follow up for you, thank you.
All right, thank you, we'll go ahead and move on from the mayor's representative and we'll go to City Council District Tyler De Santos, we have Richmond here. Go ahead, Richmond.
Hi, yes, I'm here. Hey, guys, sorry I'm not in person, I'm sure you guys can hear it, I'm, I got a little cold, so um, I'm a little congested right now and I just uh didn't want to come in person and kind of expose everybody. Um, so I'll 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 dig right into it. Um, some community updates, so I'm sure you guys have all seen the construction on Kekaliki Mall. Uh, it is expected to be completed within six weeks. Um, and then uh in regard to the uh to the photos that Chair showed last week or last month, um, uh, the departments worked to clean out Smith Baritania Park after the photos were taken by Eric and shown at this board. Um, but uh the homeless people have shown back up, have shown back up, Eric has sent us those photos and we've submitted another riser. Um, uh, a Dolores Moll Ring plaque, uh, I'm not sure if it has been installed yet, but we've been asked to uh write a letter of support. It's drafted, it just needs to be formatted and and posted and it'll be sent to uh Director Thielen. Um, a couple of legislative updates. Um, so we are going to be having, or the Makiki Neighborhood Board is going to be having, um, uh, is going to be having a town hall on the game rooms package on the fourteenth. Um, and uh it'll consist of a panel, I believe, of Tyler, Calvin Say, HPD and DVP and it'll be an opportunity for the departments and and council members to give presentations and uh answer questions from community members. So we'd urge you guys to attend, the location's still TBD, but if you have any questions about that, just uh uh let our office know. Um, Bill Forty, which is the uh transit relief bill, we anticipate it's gonna pass either this month or or at some point uh before the end of the year. Um, and uh obviously the time isn't as pressing for that one as it relates to this board because um, the construction isn't in Chinatown yet, um, but we're trying to get that out as quick as possible for uh the businesses who are being affected currently. Um, last thing, we are, of the measures that we have not introduced yet, um, affordable housing is a priority, um, specifically in this last quarter. So um, we're planning on dropping a couple of measures related to affordable housing, um, and we'll keep it in the loop about that. Um, with that, um, open any questions.
All right, does anyone in the public here at the library wish to address um, Councilman Tyler De Santos' representative Richmond at this time? It's hear none and see none, anyone online in public who would like to address Councilman Tyler De Santos' representative Richmond right now? Mr. McDonald, please.
Thank you, Chair, thank you, Richmond, for being here. Uh, I have two questions for you. The first one is, and I probably should have asked the mayor, but I think it's probably just as relevant to a city council member. But uh, our Hula Baloo Festival was canceled this year and uh I'm understanding that part of the reason is because permits weren't issued for that festival. I would like to know which departments did not issue their their perm, give their permission for this festival and what their reasoning was for that. This community depends on and our businesses, especially our small businesses. You walk down any street in Chinatown and only one out of every three business storefronts is open. We've lost Walmart, several large major corporations and one out of every three small business uh properties is clo- is only one out of every three is open right now. It's horrible and our small business community depends on these kinds of festivals and events to keep our doors open. For the city to not allow this event to take place is absolutely uh, it's inexcusable and I would like to know who's responsible for not giving the Hula Baloo Festival and its producers permission to hold their event, one of the two largest events that we have, well, probably the largest event now that St. Patrick's Day doesn't happen anymore either. So for this not event not to go forward is absolutely inexcusable and I'd like to know who exactly is responsible for denying the people who run that program their permitting. And uh the second uh issue that I would like for you to answer is uh having to do with the, you said that uh we're working on affordable housing. Affordable housing is just one small part of how we need to resolve our homeless issue. What we really want to hear about is how are we gonna clean up the homeless in our community which drive our residents and customers and and people who support our businesses drives those people away from our community. So I understand that affordable housing is a part of the solution. What else is being done and how are we going to clean our community up from the homeless issues and the crimes related with homelessness? To so that we can maybe hopefully invite people to come to our community and maybe get some uh commerce happening here. Thank you.
Um, regarding the first question, um, I believe it was DTS, I just put a uh a star advertiser link in the chat. Um, and I think it it says that in the in the star advertiser as well, who who didn't issue the permit. Uh, regarding the second one, I agree, affordable housing is not the end-all be all solution to homelessness. Um, but it is a part of it and it is something that is a priority of ours. Um, in terms of the other parts, um, I mean, working with a lot of the stakeholders in Chinatown is crucial and that's why we put money in for the Chinatown Task Force, um, that's why we are, you know, continuing to uh, uh, be on top of a lot of the requests to clear out homeless, homeless people's say in front of Smith Baritania Park. So uh, you know, there's no one thing that we're gonna do that's gonna completely change it. Um, but uh, we're gonna do what we have to do to to make the situation better.
All right, thank you very much, I appreciate it. Is there anyone else from the public who wishes to address um the councilman's representative? Uh, hear none, see none, we'll go ahead to the board, anyone on our board wishes to address? Hear none, see none, um, before you leave, um, Mr. Richmond, I'd like to um answer part of Mr. McDonald's question. Mr. McDonald, will you please get ahold of Mark Tyrone? And he'll be able to ask you what happened because everybody keeps on saying this event was canceled. That is not true, please talk to Mr. McDonald, Mr. Tyrone, okay, thank you. Go ahead.
Thank you, Chair, I do have a question for you. I know Waikiki is saying we don't want more parades, we have too many parades, we have too much going on. Can maybe the council member suggest to some of the, as they're doing the permitting or the things for the Waikiki parades, to suggest downtown Chinatown as an alternative? That could be a really nice thing for us and solve a couple of things, bring people here and take less burden off of Waikiki.
Excellent.
Absolutely, I'll ta- I'll talk to Tyler about it.
All right, so just um so the board knows and the public knows, um, we're looking in twenty twenty-four to host the Hula Laila here in Chinatown. Bring it back to Chinatown. All right. Thank you, Richmond, we do appreciate your time.
Thank you, guys.
All right, you have a good day. All right, next, we'll go ahead to State Senate, Carl Rhodes Representative, are you online, please?
Yes, sir, I'm online.
Go ahead, Sarah.
All right, my name is Sarah Thorne, good evening, everyone, unfortunately Senator Rhodes-
We cannot hear you.
Can you hear me?
Can you speak up, we we cannot hear you.
Yes, can you guys hear? How about now?
Hi, Sarah, um, just so we're clear, it's might not be on your side, um, we know that you're not muted, it is soft.
And we hear her fine online.
Okay, is there a way to uh maybe put on like a mic set, do you have any headphones?
Yes, I can-
It could be the laptop that you're using.
Yes, I can put on some headphones, I'll go get those right now.
Uh, Mr. Li, Mr. Armstrong, was the audio clear for you guys? Yeah, okay. All right, so it'll come in through the video, uh, we'll do our best to hear from the room.
All right, how about now, how is this?
That's a little better, we can continue, Sarah, thank you.
Okay, of course. Um, my name is Sarah Thorne, sorry Senator Rhodes is unable to attend tonight, but I'll be relaying all his messages. So starting off, the red light safety program is now in effect in live for multiple different locations. Next, um, last week, the Department of Health reported five hundred and fifty-nine new COVID cases with a seven-day average of eighty-seven cases and six deaths. COVID nineteen remains a top ten cause of death in this country and has claimed the lives of more than one point one million Americans. I will strongly encourage you to get your shots and boosters, the new booster shot is now available. I also encourage you to wear your mask inside, especially if you or someone you live with is at risk. Also, the flu shot is now available. As the twenty twenty-four legislative session will be starting in January- As the 2024 legislative session will be starting in January, please contact my office now if you have any new bill ideas. And next, I have, we got a couple of questions last month. So starting off, we had two questions from Board Member Steve. And the questions were why the DOH website has not been updated about the red light safety program? And who is taking revenue for those cameras? So, starting off, the DOH website updates, the red light safety program citation numbers that have been operational six or more months on monthly basis. So the next update should be the September twenty-fourth through October twenty-third date for the red light safety program. I know we talked about earlier how it hasn't been updated. So I can definitely go back and contact someone from HDOT about that. And as for the question on who is collecting the funds for the camera? All funds collected shall be deposited into a photo red light imaging detector system program special fund. Where the money in the fund shall be expended to include the establishment, operation, oversight, repair, and maintenance for the photo red light imaging detector system. And for the implementation of the photo red light imaging detector system program. And I can put a link down below for more information about the red light safety program. As for another question from Board Member Kevin on if the cameras worked at night? The cameras for the red light safety program do work at night. And I can also put a link in the chat below of, of this. And please do not hesitate to call Senator Rhodes' office at eight oh eight five eight six six one three zero with any questions or concerns. Or you can email him at sendroads@capital.hawaii.gov.
Alright, so I do appreciate it. So for those that couldn't hear that, and I'm sure that was majority of us, you can go online tomorrow because ours will be uploaded. And you'll be able to see it. Also, I did put in on the Google Drive, the Senator's report, so that's also there. So I don't, is there anybody here that would like to ask her any questions? Ask her any questions? No one here? Anyone online? Mr. McDonald, keep your questions to one minute, please.
Thank you Chair, thank you Ms. Thorne for being here.
Mr. McDonald.
Can you hear me? Can you hear me?
Yes.
Thank you Chair, and thank you Ms. Thorne for being here. My question for the Senator, two months ago, we were hearing the appeal from the Hala Baloo producer, Mr. Tyrone. And eight out of the nine members of our board voted in support of it. And six out of seven members of the public spoke in support of it. Only one member of the public and one member of our board were against this event being held in our district. And yet, the Senator, for reasons I don't understand, which maybe I'm asking you to explain or ask him to explain for you, came out and spoke out against the Hala Baloo event. So my question would be, does the Senator remember that he works for the people of this community? And is in office to, to, to exert the will of the people of this community? Does he remember that he works for this, the people of this community? And if so, then why would he actively, why would he actively go against the urging of the people of this community? And not support an event that the people have spoken out to him directly to tell him, we support this event overwhelmingly? And yet, he somehow was, did not support it and spoke out against it despite the wishes of his constituency? I'd like to have the Senator explain that.
Of course, thank you so much.
Alright.
Thank you so much, Mr. McDonald. I can definitely chat with Senator Rhodes. And next month, I do believe that he should be in on the meeting, so he can definitely answer that question for you. But thank you so much for your concern.
Thank you, Mr. McDonald. Next, do we have any board members or anyone else in the public first of all? Online, none? Alright, any board members that would like to address? Alright, here and non, seeing none. Sarah, thank you very much, we do appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome, you have a good day. Alright, next we'll go to State House District Twenty-Six, Scott Psyche. Do we have any representative or Scott Psyche there? Seeing none, hearing none, we'll go to State House District Twenty-Eight, Representative Daniel Holt. Are you online or do you have anyone represented in you today? Hearing none, seeing none, we're going to go ahead and move on. We're going to go on to monthly reports. These are five-minute reports, no more than five minutes apiece. We'll start off with the Honolulu Board of Water Supply, please.
Can you hear me?
Yes, we can Iris.
Oh, great. Okay, I have my main break report. There was two main breaks in October. On October twenty-fifth near three-three-three Queen Street. And on October twenty-ninth near fifteen-twenty-two Queen Emma Street. And a short general announcement, we're getting a start on the 2024 poster and poetry contests. So we launched the contest, we're launching the contest. And it's poster contest is open to grades K through six. And the poetry contest is open to grades seven to twelve. So this year's theme is our water, our home. So the deadline to enter is February twenty-eighth, twenty twenty-four. So for more information, please go to boardofwatersupply.com/wcwcontest. Okay, so that's the general announcement. I just had the three follow-up questions from last month. One question was asked, how is opposition to the rate increase being addressed? So we will, my answer was, that was given. We will be giving a recap of what we have received at our November twenty-fourth board meeting. Excuse me, November twenty-seventh board meeting. Final decision is pending, but could be made at the November twenty-seventh board meeting. We expect the rates to be implemented in February twenty twenty-four. We are also responding to each comment as they come in and they have been shared with the manager and the board chair. The second question is, what is the likelihood that the proposed rates will be reduced in any form overall or each year, you know? Prior to approval or in the future for any year? So I was told, that's provided is we're not sure. So please note that the proposed water rate increases, as well as any potential amendments or deferrals to the rate structure or rate schedule, require approval from the BWS's Board of Directors. And the third comment, a question was, what was the deadline to, for comments? I had mistakenly said October eighteenth at the other meeting, it was October fifteenth. And I had put it in the chat, but other than that's passed. So other than that, the, the community will be able to comment on the proposed water rates during the special of the hearing at that November twenty-seventh BWS Board of Directors meeting. So there is still another opportunity to come and speak up against or for the rate increase. And that's my follow-up from last month. If there's anything more.
Thank you very much. Alright, so anyone has any questions for Iris from the Board of Water Supply? Anyone here, seeing none? Anyone online, please? Alright, seeing none, any board members? Seeing none, thank you Iris, we do appreciate everything.
Thank you.
Next, we're going to move on to Safe Haven, Greg Payton, please.
Thank you Chair and Board Members. My name is Greg Payton, I serve as Executive Director for Mental Health Kukoa, or MHK. One of our programs is Safe Haven located on Alakea Street. From January to October of twenty twenty-three, we placed more than sixty homeless adults into permanent supported housing. MHK has moved completely now out of Palau Hali on Palau, Palaui Street. Special thanks to Anton Krucki and the City and County of Honolulu for their support and help with moving and moving the tenants. We have downsized MHK, we have downsized our presence in Chinatown by more than fifty percent. And that's my report. We've changed our program completely to permanent supported housing. We do no more homeless outreach and we do no homeless drop-in. That's my report and I can answer any questions that you might have.
Alright, any residents? Have any questions for Greg Payton? Any residents online have any questions from Greg Payton? Any board members have any questions? Go ahead, Board Member Laurie McConney, please.
Thank you Chair, thank you Greg. Hey, I'm the bathroom person. I was looking at your statistics and seeing that fifty, it was almost fifty thousand people use the toilet facilities more than twice as much as showers and lockers. And so I think, do you have a point of view on bathroom availability in the downtown Chinatown area?
It's, it's, it's a difficult situation. As you know, a year, a few years ago at Palau Hali, we had two street-side public toilets. The problem with, with the, that we encountered at the time was they need to be staffed constantly. Otherwise, there'd be illegal activity going on in a very short period of time. So it, the one thing that we've learned from that is that there's going to have to be some kind of staff coverage to make sure that you could take care of any, of any illegal activity going on.
Thank you. So with the closure of Walmart and if you think of, if you don't live downtown and you come downtown, I have no idea where you're supposed to go to the bathroom. And I know that that's an issue on our sidewalks and in our streets. But if we can't point people to an alternative, so I guess I don't have a question except that if, if you would recommend or suggest anything that we might do to try to help, I guess it would be the city to try to understand that this is an important situation for people.
It's, it's a very good question and obviously, I mean, it's a part of hygiene and it's a part of a city, a city function. I'd be happy to sit with you and maybe with Anton Krucki, we could sit down and talk about what might be some options. I think it's a, it's a solvable solution, it's just going to take some work and some work.
Any other questions from any other board member? Hearing none, seeing none, before we go any further, I do believe that the city did say that they plan to not build any bathrooms or address this problem. Even though I believe it was in twenty sixteen that the city promised to build bathrooms at Smith-Beretania Park, one of those washroom ones. And I'll address that with the city too tomorrow for you. Alright, thank you very much.
Mr. Chair.
Alright. Yes, Mr. Armstrong, I'm moving on, yeah?
Yeah, just so to add a postscript to your last comment, you know, we're spending eight million dollars at K Kauliki Mall with no bathrooms.
Okay, I understand that too, yes. So this is a big issue in Chinatown. We'll go, we'll go ahead and work on it as a team, yeah? We'll figure this out. Alright, next.
Thank you so much.
Oh, that, sorry about that. Great, thank you very much and thank you for your report. I did post your report up, alright, to the Google Drive. Next, we have Honolulu Authority for Rapid Transportation, Mr. Cho, five minutes, go ahead.
Thank you Chair, can you hear me okay?
Yes, go ahead.
Okay, sure. Good evening everyone, Harry Cho with the Honolulu Authority for Rapid Transportation. My only update is for a question from last month about business assistance in Dillingham. Last month, I mentioned what HART does to accommodate businesses, like installing signage, maintaining access to driveways and coordinating work with the property owners and tenants. However, we don't oversee any programs to help businesses financially. That would actually have to come through other, other programs with the city. So I might have to actually refer this to the, the mayor's representative to check with the Department of Budget and Fiscal Services. But there's actually, actually an existing fund called the Transit Mitigation Fund, which was created in twenty fifteen to help businesses negatively impacted by the construction of the rail project. Unfortunately, I don't have the details on how this fund works or how it's accessed or implemented. But I'll be sure to reach out to the mayor's representative to see if they can get any additional information by the next meeting. The other questions from last month related to ridership and the operating budget, I believe were responded to by Mr. Santi earlier. So that takes care of that and I don't have anything else to report on, but I can take any additional questions. Thank you.
Thank you. So first we start, do we have anyone here in the library, anyone from the public who would like to ask a question? Seeing none, hearing none, we'll go to the public, anyone in the public? Anyone, I mean, anyone online? Hearing none, seeing none, we'll go to the board, anyone in board members, go ahead, Board Member, please.
Thank you Chair, thank you Mr. Cho for addressing my question and giving me the information on the Transit Mitigation Fund. Because yeah, a lot of small businesses along that construction line are definitely losing a lot of revenue. Tenants, property owners, et cetera. Just a thought, it might be, thank you for volunteering to reach out to the mayor. It also might be the city council, I've heard, I've heard that Transit Mitigation Fund may be struggling to get funding and, and that also might be a, a city council matter. So if you're willing and able, yeah, I'd love to, love to get whatever, follow up, get press on that.
Yeah, sure thing, will do.
Alright, thank you. Any other board members? Alright, seeing none, hearing none, we'll go ahead and, thank you Harry Cho, appreciate it, nice seeing you again. We'll go ahead and go to Chinatown Improvement District, Lee Stack has left. She left earlier, she did advise me that she wouldn't be able to stay because she had other things to do. But I do have her, she's sending me a report, I'll put it up on the Google Drive as soon as I get it, okay? Thank you. Next, we have Neighborhood Board Citizen Patrol, Kevin Lai, please.
Chair, just a few quick observations from the last couple of months as we've been catching up after missing a few months. It's been kind of a sleepy town here in Honolulu for the last little bit. People are resting all over the place. Just as an admonition to those who might be driving around, just be careful if you're approaching the curb or the sidewalks because you never know what unobstructed, unexpected obstructions might be there. Again, this just speaks to the fact of what can we do to try to mitigate these semi-permanent ostensibly illegal structures that are blocking the sidewalks, especially if you needed to get by on a personal mobility vehicle. Eventually, the resting ends and people begin to wake up and rub their eyes and get moving. And they may take a haphazard walk on the road, maybe they'll pick up some trash, but then might be time for a nap again later on. This person was looking for something on the sidewalk. I think that she eventually did find it. But fortunately, it hadn't fallen into the same hole that's here on Beretania Street across from the new senior housing, I believe on Alakea Street. But there are plenty of places where people might go to hang out and hide out, parking structures being just one. So please use caution if you're in those areas at day or night, as it seems. We do know that there are vehicles that in some of the parking lots are just simply left open for kind of a respite place to take a nap. And we have heard reports of illicit activity happening in this vehicle, which really only has three usable wheels. In the same structure, there has been vandalism and even arson going on. So again, please use caution whenever you're in these areas and know that this is happening, yes, in our town and in Honolulu. The graffiti squads are still out and about, the CME guys are here. And it's hard to tell if the one on the right here was trying to misspell the word moose or what. But we'll keep an eye on those and see if we can get these addressed later on. I think that of the other items that we see around town, they're, they're pretty regular, piles of belongings. We're trying to find ways to mitigate this. I believe that what we see here in front of St. Andrews Cathedral is probably the most inoffensive thing that's been left on their property in quite some time. We talked about the, the structures here, we recall this dog from the story that was told last month. But make note of the construction-grade pallets that we see here on the sidewalks. You know, where and how are these being acquired? I'd love to know if we could find a way to, to address this. You know, this results in structures that, here you can get a, a nice one with a lanai with storage for three vehicles. This one has a conveniently portable siding with a slanted roof. And then if you'd like, you can get this one in blue as well. But again, the, the structures seem to be never-ending and they are obstructing those of us who do like to use the sidewalks for which we are paying our tax dollars. So again, we have to urge caution on these areas. Reference we've made earlier to what's going on on the Diamond Head lawn of the Capitol Building. Yes, we can see some of the same hard structures in addition to the tents that are being erected there. and the numbers do wax away on a daily basis, but there's really never a time when there's not this setting here on our beloved state Capitol grounds. Uh, I'd like to know what we can do about this, of course, necessity is the mother of invention, so we have ways that people are drying out their clothes from the, the air conditioning vents that are exiting onto the, the lawn itself. But again, uh, the numbers do increase, uh, pretty consistently. And again, this is our state Capitol, people that come to visit, they come in awe of our, of our unique Capitol building structure and then we have these issues that still need to be addressed. It's not just people though, there, there are also birds that congregate in the same places when there are fewer people there. We still, still have people who are, uh, continuing to ignore statutes about illegally feeding feral birds walking on the sidewalk, you may wonder, well, why is there a group of pigeons, or doves rather, in, in a circle on the sidewalk and it turns out there's a very enthusiastic cab driver giving them some free ramen. Uh, where I'm traveling now, it turns out that these people appear to, uh, worship my arch-nemesis, the rooster, so I'm trying to deal with that while I'm away, but I hope to get back to town and we'll resume some local patrols. We'll plan to resume in January, the second Tuesday of each month, starting at seven PM. We will meet outside the Diamond Head Tower lobby of Kukui Plaza, bring family, friends, a camera, join us, help us identify these areas of concern and bring them to the attention of our elected officials and also brainstorm to try to find solutions. So again, no hosted patrol, uh, later this month or in December, but we look forward to seeing everyone joining us again in twenty twenty-four in January. Thank you Chair, and I'll yield if there are any questions.
From our neighborhood. Go ahead.
Thank you Patrick Smith, thank you Chair. Uh, I'm kinda curious about the graffiti issue, I know that's one small subset of a large number of problems, but are you aware of, uh, the city making any movement on that problem? I understand like Lieutenant, uh, Segucio had referred to a program that apparently is no longer in operation. I mean, i- is there some way, you know, let's get together and, and see if we can attack that problem because that really affects a large swath of, of the island, not just, um, Chinatown, but if you have any knowledge or any way we could get moving on this issue as a community, I'd appreciate it, thank you Dr. Lai.
Uh, thank you Chair, if I may address.
Go ahead.
Uh, thank you, uh, Patrick, thank you for your question, uh, and especially for differentiating the local Chinatown area and the, the broader problem. I'll leave it to Member McDonald, uh, rather, Member Armstrong to comment on his efforts to, uh, address the, the source of the raw materials used for the, the graffiti. But we are definitely hoping that the, the new surveillance camera system in the Chinatown substation would perhaps, uh, permit, uh, HPD to identify those who are executing the graffiti at any given time and quickly respond. We know that, uh, in other jurisdictions, the ability to catch people in the act cannot serve as a, a quick deterrent and we're hoping that that may replace the need to do the chronic paint-overs of, of walls and whatnot, which inevitably are gonna be re-graffitied within the next, uh, hours to days, thank you.
Thank you. Alright, so, do we have any other board members who would like to, um, any, first of all, anyone online from the public? Uh, seen none, any board members? Board member Laurie?
Thank you Chair. Kevin, thank you for, uh, being here tonight and thank you for your ongoing efforts here. I've gotta say, I almost get numb to this because it feels like it's the same over and over and over and it feels sort of hopeless, uh, at times, which is not what any of us want to feel. If, if, do you see anything that's getting better? And what do you see that's getting dramatically worse? And is there one thing that we might focus on specifically that might, if we put a fine point on it, that maybe we could have an impact on?
Thank you, Member McCarty, and again, a lot of the reasons that I do try to bring these to attention is so that we can, number one, address safety issues. I think that when we know that there are circumstances which lead to people laying with their legs halfway in the street, in the roadway, that's a severe danger. We've talked in the past about the liability the city could face if there were accidents based on this, so to the degree that we can help address those structures, which clearly are, are an obstruction to those who need to use the sidewalks, I'd like to see that as, as a primary issue. I really dislike the fact that a lot of the scenes that we see make us look like the proverbial Skid Row of Los Angeles and other places. Uh, that'd be great. On the positive side, yes, there have been improvements, I think that we've gotten the attention of current and past city council members and attention of the mayor and some of his, uh, his team. So, we're gonna keep at it, uh, I think the more eyes on it, the more attention we can draw to it, that's what we'd like to, to see happen. It is difficult not to get numbed to it, but your comment is, is well taken.
Alright, thank you, any other board members? Mr. Armstrong, and this will be the last.
Thank you very much.
Go ahead, Mr. Armstrong.
Thank you very much, Chair, um, you know, in, in piggybacking with what was just said, I think that, um, the members of our board and members of our community in the neighborhood need to kind of take a look at the nuanced differences that are occurring on the streets in our neighborhood. I was just in Chinatown like a, uh, a night ago, two nights ago, and I noticed that there were more, there were less people on the streets than in doorways, but those that were there, and I'm, I'm pretty sure Member Lai would probably agree, they seemed to be more catatonic and more in a drug-induced haze, which is extremely concerning. And, um, certainly those at, at the Safeway Shopping Center seem to be almost lining up at night, um, to fix, to have a fix and then to just basically, uh, be paralyzed for a couple hours. And I'm, I'm very concerned that this is a new change in what we see downtown and in Chinatown. And I just ask that everybody be aware of it and be cognizant of, um, some of those underlying issues. Finally, to Mr. Uh, Patrick, I believe, if it, i- i- if I could just urge him to stop asking us to do something about graffiti since we have been addressing it for over two years and to ask him to politely, or to politely ask him to, to draw his attention to our city council. They have in front of them all the tools they need to eliminate this scourge in our community and they refuse to. Um, Mr. McDonald talks about commerce and, and I completely agree that we're at a point, uh, crossroads where we need to bring commerce back to our neighborhood, but nobody's gonna invest in a business if they can't keep it clean and they can't be sure that it'll be free of graffiti. Tyler Dos Santos Tom is not addressing this and I'm on his side, but not on this issue and I think, uh, Board Member Lai would also agree that nothing has been done at city council, that's where it needs to happen, thank you.
Your time is up, thank you. Alright, so we're gonna go ahead and we're gonna move forward. Next, we have community, um, try, thank, first of all, thank you, Mr. Lai, do appreciate that. So, Mr. Lai, you'll be glad to know one thing, I did walk through the Capitol today, there were no tents there, they are being removed. Thank you, but thank you, appreciate for those photos. Next, we're gonna go to Chinatown Business Committee Association, Chulanshur Bach is not here, but her report is on Google Drive, so please take a look at her report on Google Drive. Alright, next, we're going to item number seven, approval of minutes. I hope everyone had a chance, go ahead and look at the minutes. Any board member?
I, I, I'd like to make a motion to approve the minutes as Mr. Lai has dropped, or the summary.
Okay, do we have a second? Bob, are you seconded, Bob? Yep, we have a second. Do we have any discussions on this? No discussions. Alright, do we have any, um, on opposing this? Hearing none, the minutes have passed us with. Thank you. Next, we're gonna go to
Mr. Chair, you're breaking up, we don't have any audio. And we actually don't see you either. Just for a moment, I heard, can you hear? Okay, we can see you now.
Can you see me now, can you hear me now?
Yes, yes.
Okay, so, once again, determination of board recess schedule. Each board is allowed three recess during a twelve-month period. We've never taken before, but then we came and started taking it in January, which worked for everyone. This is of a particular concern because New Year's Day will be falling on a Monday and our board meeting is that Thursday, yeah? And schools don't go back to the following week, so this school actually will be closed. And for us to ask the school to send somebody here to open it up when they're on vacation, makes no sense. So, um, this is something that we need to think about and I think that every board should take a meeting to regenerate, like we have to do in life, you know? You have to take PTO, take PTO. But, we don't not take three like most, like others might. So, do we have any discussions on this? But, well, any motion first?
Uh, I move to, to have January be a recess.
Okay.
Second.
We have a motion and we have a second, do we have any discussions on this? Go ahead.
Um.
Board member McCarty.
Thank you Chair, so we have a lot of things that happen in February, so I think we want to make this decision really soon so that people can come in December. Um, I, I know we've heard about the Chinese New Year, Lunar New Year things, but anything else so that people don't feel like they didn't have an opportunity to know?
I agree. Anyone else? Board member Lai.
Thank you Chair, um, you know, we, we faced this last year, we had predetermined to have a January's recess, I believe, and it did have some negative ramifications on our spring schedule and agenda, uh, set. Do you know of any laundry list of invitees or things that you as Chair, you know, want to make sure that we cover uh, with invited guests during the next, uh, a couple of months during twenty twenty-four?
Yes, so, um, the new Marriott will be coming and speaking next month to us, the owners of the new Marriott will be coming and speaking to us, um. Everything else that was set, there's nothing set for January, um, no one's asked any questions on that. Everything was for, um, February, for the Chinese years, that's what everyone has been focusing on, the parade and what was going on in February this year. But, as far as anything else, no one has, um, reached out for anything in January. And right now, the only one that we've got for December coming up is Marriott, yeah? Who will speak to us. I am looking for other people, trying to get DTS, but they refuse to come to our, come to us for some reason and I'm not happy about it. We will get them here, trust me. Yeah, but, um, no, nothing else, heard, I've heard nothing else at this time. I did put up the, on the Google Drive, the, uh, marathon route and traffic advisory for it. The marathon never comes to us anymore because it's a dead set, something that happens every year, we know that it's permission, so they do send us their reports.
Uh, Chair, just as a brief follow-up, if we were to face this in the future, do we know that we could possibly meet a Kapalama Hale on a, on a snap basis if necessary?
Uh, it's, that is always possible, yes.
Mr. Chair.
Go ahead, um, Mr. Armstrong.
Thank you, I, I just would briefly say that I, I, I think we, we suffered too many, uh, issues last time when we took January off, that we should, if we have to meet a Kapalama Ha- Hale, that's where we should meet and, and most of us will go online, I'm sure. Um, I think we should not, uh, recess in January.
Alright, so, um, any other discussions on this? Is there any objections to this motion? Yep, we got one, any other one else, there's two. So we'll do a roll call.
Alright, the motion on the table is to recess, um, in January. Armstrong?
No.
Fitzsimmons?
Isokane? Stan.
McDonald? Sorry, uh, McCarty? Lai?
Nay.
Thompson? Carvalho?
Aye.
Alright, motion doesn't pass, two in favor, two no, and one abstention, we can discuss this later, thank you.
Alright, thank you, next we'll move on to Hala Baloo, just, and I just want this to be quick. It's not just about Hala Baloo, but it's about every single other event that comes here. This past Saturday, it showed that we need events like this in Chinatown. I mean, we need these events to bring foot traffic here because it's not just the area that's bordered off, but it's the areas outside of it that get a lot of this, um, foot traffic that goes through. And what can we do as a board to ensure that these events go off successfully? Anyone wanna discuss this? This, this is just a discussion.
Uh, Chair, uh, one idea I have is that we calendar, uh, events by, that the Neighborhood Board calendars events by month. And that doesn't mean that we stay specifically on different things, but back to the parade, that if we say we want to have an event in Chi- downtown Chinatown every month and then we work with DPP or different people who are granting the permits and I know I've worked with them before on permitting and it can sometimes be something you don't understand why you don't get something. Um, if we could, uh, collaborate with them in some way or maybe have them come in here, maybe we can come up with a way that we can bring events here. We know that the, um, Chinese New Year Parade is huge. So we know people will come, come here, so maybe if we can be proactive in going out and seeking, uh, seeking events, maybe we can bring them, and, um, anyway, that's my.
No, I like it, anyone else, sir? Mr. Armstrong, Bob, Board member Armstrong?
Uh, thank you Chair, and I wanna just piggyback on, uh, uh, Member McCarty's fabulous comment earlier about soliciting events that may be too numerous for Waikiki to bring them to the Chinatown downtown area, it is an outstanding suggestion. Now, not, that's not gonna work for everyone, um, but, you know, for instance, you know, the gay pride, uh, parade was last month and, uh, in fact, probably last week or so and there's no reason why that couldn't be done in our neighborhood, um, in fact, I think it would be very co- a comfortable fit. Um, but, we need to start talking, we need to have our council member maybe work with the Chair of City Council to bring those events here and to solicit them and to say that we're open for business again and we want actively to solicit folks to come downtown and enjoy our restaurants, our sites, our parks, our museums and all the people that live in our neighborhood. Thank you Chair.
Thank you very much, but, um, Board member Armstrong, I do appreciate it, um, Board member Lai?
Thank you Chair, uh, just one comment to follow on that, um, you know, there are vent, uh, cities and states that do organize annual, monthly events, but they're done a year or so in advance, so it may take a larger coordinating committee, whether it's run by the state or a private organization, maybe there needs to be an RFP issued by the, the city to, to handle that, but that might be necessary. And then Chair, as, as mentioned earlier, I'd like to make comments after we're done discussing sub-item one under this item B of section eight.
Okay, no problem. Anyone else, please? Go ahead, then, then Laurie.
Um, yeah, well, thanks for putting this on the agenda Chair, uh, just in general, my observation on what happened, especially for Hala Baloo. Um, one thing to think about is universally, all of us speaking here, we all agree that we need the foot traffic in our neighborhood uh, and these events are the best things for it. Possibly, one thing I notice for Hala Baloo, even though we know, uh, Mr. Tyrone and his group were very successful. Possibly, one thing I noticed for Halal Baloo, even though we know, uh, Mr. Tyrone and his group were very successful in putting on historical events, there seemed to be a lot of opposition, I mean, even amongst people on this board, uh, and, and certainly in the community. So just maybe kind of on a soapbox here, a philosophy that, hey, for those leaders who have done it in the past, who have done good work to minimize potential spill-over problems like drunken disorderies, underage drinking, et cetera, which certain people, Mark Tyrone, um, and, and James Tennant, et cetera, have done in the past, just making sure we support them and making sure, if need to be, if we know there's going to be opposition from either their certain members of the community or certain departments, we have to do a resolution. We'll do a resolution. Just, we need time and we'll write it and we'll send it out to everyone.
All right, so I'm going to close this part right now really quickly, uh, um, just want to state this, that I know we're a small board, but maybe we should, um, get a committee going on this and something, think about a committee for events. I think that may work so we can get a couple of our board members together to put some ideas together on what we can do to help to ensure that these events are not canceled and that they go as planned, yeah? All right. Oh, wait a minute, I forgot. You had one thing to say. Go ahead, Board Member, um, McCarty.
Thank you, Chair. So, um, I've worked with D P P a lot. Uh, I've put on events and done different things with them, and, uh, so I'd like to be on that committee. I also know they turned down things, and I know Waikiki has said specifically that they want fewer events. So, um, we may be able to solve a couple of problems, uh, for people and, um, and I'd like to participate. Okay, thank you.
Awesome.
Help me in.
Mr. Li wants to talk about something. So, okay, um, so now we'll go ahead. Mr. Li, go ahead. You were talking about, you wanted to amend something?
Thank you, Chair. Uh, just a litany of items within the one minute. Uh, Mr. Buck just mentioned the need to further discuss the meeting, which has not been deferred for January, so that I think that should be on topic for December unless it's happening by default. Secondly, uh, regarding an earlier suggestion to change the name of our approval of minutes section to, uh, approval of written summary. If you think that a motion by our board would be helpful for you in deciding to make that change on future agenda items, consider it so moved at the conclusion of these comments. Uh, third, I'm wondering what of the Webex timer app and testing of that, uh, I think that this meeting, which is trying to be relatively short, uh, would be a, a great venue for testing that, that, uh, application. And then another one, what of the intimation of the impending request to refund the one thousand dollar allocation we were given by N C O because of the upcoming budget stranglehold if we don't spend it ourselves? So I wonder if we've had any plans to execute that. Uh, I'm wondering if you had received any feedback about the draft survey from the Neighborhood Commission Office Survey Committee? Uh, and then lastly, is there any information about the Conference of Chairs? Uh, I can't recall if it's just happened or is about to happen. Hopefully you can bring your report back to us, and, uh, thank you for the time.
Okay, so we'll go ahead and I'll go ahead and add that as board concerns for the next meeting, and I got you. And as far as the written summary, um, we'll go ahead and take care of that because, um, we have an idea how to make it work. And then if we need to get board approval, then we'll go ahead and get board approval at that time also, okay? So I'll have all this on the next month's agenda as you've just asked, okay? Thank you. I appreciate that. All right. All right, everyone, that, um, last one we have, um, I want to talk about is community walk. This is a walk around downtown Chinatown with the community and local politicians on a weekend. This is, uh, idea to, um, where everyone gets together from the Senator Carrots, um, Councilman Tyler Dos Santos, I mean, even Mayor Seem, and they'll walk around Chinatown and downtown with our residents and businesses in the area where we not only approach the bad areas, uh, that are of concern, but we can tell the history of Chinatown. We can tell the history of downtown, the Palace, uh, everything else. We have a history here that I think a lot of people would be interested in, so we can see the good and we can see the bad, and then we can figure out how to come together to make everything better, because there's a lot of good in the, in downtown Chinatown, a lot of history here. Everybody talks about, um, Chinatown, the first Chinatown, actually the oldest Chinatown in the United States of America. What people don't realize is from the Kingdom of Hawaii, when Chinatown was established, to the first plane landed here in Honolulu, every single immigrant, every single person had to come through downtown Chinatown. This was the Ellis Island of Hawaii. They had to come through this area. This is why this area is very historical. So if you guys want to discuss this now or think about things like this, think about this, because I still have to address and ask both the Senator and the council member about this, but I just wanted to bring this out. Go ahead, um, Board Member Armstrong.
I think it's a great idea, Chair. I think it, we should institutionalize it as an annual thing, perhaps at the beginning of the year, the calendar year, that is. And, um, um, I, I think it would be wonderful if we could also add for the community a, a, uh, you know, a luncheon or, you know, something, uh, you know, so that we all come together in a spirit of, uh, of helpfulness and positivity and really, um, have a great discussion that, that morning or afternoon.
Uh, thank you. I do appreciate that, and I do agree. We would, um, should have a function for maybe stopping at one of the parks or whatever and having lunch with our community. I think that'd be a great idea. Anyone else? Any ideas? No? Yeah, but he's not a board member. This, this is a board concern. I do apologize, Mr. McDonald. I cannot allow you in this. This is for board business, yeah? That's why you'll be able to, um, bring it up, um, we'll bring this up next month, and you'll be able to go ahead and address this, yeah?
Twenty-four.
Mr. Li, this is the last question.
Uh, thank you, Chair. I just must, uh, caution you, as this is an agendized item, members of the public are permitted to comment. You can certainly corral comments, but as with any item on a public meeting agenda, any member of the public is permitted to comment if you so choose, so I caution you against prohibiting, Mr. McDonald.
All right, so we're going to go ahead and side with Mr. Li on this one to be safe. Mr. McDonald, please be brief. Go ahead, Mr. McDonald.
Thank you, Chair. My hand was actually up from the last topic, agenda item, which I wanted to just suggest. Downtown used to have a very robust First Friday celebration that has been all but shut down. And, uh, I think a part of, if a community's, if a committee is going to be organized to bringing events back to our community, one of the things we might consider is reviving the, the First Friday celebration and, uh, maybe even bringing back the street closures that we used to have.
All right.
Thank you, uh, for recognizing me perhaps a little late, but thanks for the recognition.
Okay, that's, we didn't see, Mr. McDonald. Listen, um, so I just want to address what you just said. Um, if you want to, because you'll be back to the board next month, if you want to. If you can go ahead and talk to the other ones that were involved with it, because they're, they're trying to build a first, um, rebuild the First Fridays at this time, okay? So you know who I'm talking about. They're trying to build the First Fridays to get it back on track to where it used to be. So if you want to go ahead and talk to those bar owners, I'm sure they'll give you more details on what they're trying to do. Appreciate it. So everyone, this, uh, um, complete our session of Neighborhood Board thirteen. Um, next, Downtown Chinatown Neighborhood Board, thirteen's regular meeting is scheduled for Thursday, December seventh, twenty twenty-three, at six o'clock P M. Eke Elio Kalani Middle School and virtually via Webex. Rebooked for Downtown Chinatown Neighborhood Board, number thirteen meetings are scheduled on Olelo, Channel forty-nine, every third Thursdays at nine o'clock P M, as well as nine o'clock A M on the fourth Saturday of each month. An archive of the past, meetings may be found at olelo.org, yeah? By searching on Downtown Chinatown. All right, this meeting is adjourned at, hold on, eight twenty-one. Thank you, guys. You have a good day. Bye-bye.